Good evening. Welcome to... Is it on? Okay. Yes. Good evening, welcome to East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors. Regular PM session, December 16th. Recording device will be used for this meeting. We'd like to open up with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to remind everyone, I'm sorry, really quick, that we will have, obviously, everyone has masks on, and if you come up to talk, you can take them off. There's some water front. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
We'd like to start out with public comment for agenda items. I will note that there seems to be an increasingly large crowd this evening. I'm assuming a lot has to do with the agenda item for new business under D for a possible settlement agreement. We will probably be keeping all those comments at that period. We're going to go through the meeting and then start there. So if you have any public comment for any other agenda items, please step forward now if you could. Yes, Carl.
I'm speaking to item 7C.
Yes. And can you please state your name?
Carl Croft, Sussex Place. Request for exoneration by the Downingtown Area School District. I'm here to ask the board to reject the exoneration. The Downingtown Area School District actually leased this property for profit with the Weavers over the last 12 years. They knew what they were doing, and they knew that they would have to pay the exoneration. So what I believe happened was in the settlement that they had with the buyer is they forgot to put in the agreement that the buyer had to pay the taxes, and now they're asking us to help make up their mistake. And I reject that as a taxpayer here in East Brandywine Township where the school district didn't hold the land as school land, they held it as a commercial property. So I would ask the supervisors to please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else to comment on a agenda item? Yes?
I don't have a comment specifically about an agenda item, but I would like to address the board in my name.
Actually, at the end of the meeting, there's generally a place for that, that we can for non-agenda items.
Okay.
Were you planning on staying for the whole meeting?
I'm not now.
Okay. All right, thank you. So any other comment on agenda items? Okay. The minutes of the previous board meetings.
Yeah, is okay with me?
I'll make a motion to accept the November 18th and the December 2nd, 2021 board meetings.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the treasurer's report and authorization to pay the bills. Excuse me? Is there? Is it available online?
No. The materials at the back of the room are the agenda for tonight's meeting. There is no full packet available for members in the audience.
Would you like a copy?
I think going forward, it would be helpful for all of us to have a copy of the treasurer's report so we know what the financial situation is with the decision.
I would agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Or online?
I know, obviously, committed transparency, but when we don't know if we're going to have no one or 100 people, and we have packets that are 100 pages, we could be wasting a lot of paper. So my recommendation, if going forward, we want to have the full packet available for public inspection, we do so online.
George?
I agree. Yep, online.
Great. Thank you.
I'm okay. I looked at all the, I signed all the bills, so I looked at them all. I'm fine with them.
As am I. All right.
Need a motion at all?
Sure.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report and authorize staff to pay the bills.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to reports, township manager, Luke?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have no report this evening. I've been pretty busy, my apologies.
Okay. Building inspectors' report. Do you want to go and read that?
Would you like me to read the building inspectors' report into the record?
Yes, please.
All right. For November 2021, township issued 22 total building permits and three zoning permits. The fees collected for building and zoning permits were $8,403. In addition to those permits, 24 use and occupancy permits were issued, and 227 inspections were completed. This report is respectfully submitted by Noran King, the Building Codes and Permits Secretary.
Thank you. Matt, for the roadmaster's report?
Okay. I'm trying to find it in this pile of papers here. Did you see it? I did not make a copy for myself. All right, thank you. The Aspen Drive paving project is complete. The contractor, DeRocco Brothers Incorporated, completed the project the middle of last month, and we have not received a final invoice to date. And then, a second project on Aspen Drive is the lining, pipe lining, for some of the stormwater within the development. We anticipate Mr. Rehab, who's the contractor, to begin the pipe lining project after the first of the year, and the contractor will be flushing and videoing the drain pipes prior to lining. The road department is prepared for the upcoming winter season. We remind residents that vehicles are not permitted to be parked on the roads two hours after the start of the storm and until the roads have been cleared completely. We also recommend checking your mailboxes, make sure they're secure, and any rotten posts are replaced. The department completed leaf collection on December 10th. Due to the amount of leaves for the third collection and repairs to the machine, the collection stretched into a second week. Final report will be included in my January report. And from the road department, please have a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, the township police department's report?
Good evening. The police department's Toys for Tots campaign was a huge success again this year, and I just want to thank all the residents and other people who dropped off toys. I think it took them two panel vans to get all the toys to the drop-off location. I just want to take a moment and thank Officer Lindsay Taylor for her dedication and hard work the last two years. Lindsay was one of our part-time police officers, and she's going to be leaving us at the end of the year to take a full-time position with Upper Euclid Township. So we want to wish her the best of luck and thank her for everything that she's done for us. And then following on the footsteps of Sergeant Glenn Mooney's retirement this year, we're very happy to announce that our other part-time officer, Alex Reed, is going to be appointed to full-time status effective January 3rd, and he will be sworn in at the Board of Supervisors' reorganization meeting at that time. And our report for the month, we had 2,072 incidents logged, we had 188 investigations completed, department had 11 criminal arrests, two summary arrests, and we had no warrant or juvenile petitions, five accidents. We issued 95 traffic citations, 75 traffic warnings, and officers logged 8,655 miles of patrol. Training completed for the month. Myself, Lieutenant Yankanich, Sergeant Tyree, and our secretary, Rose Jameson, attended a PSP Nibers certification training at the State Police barracks. Finally, I also want to, footsteps of the roadmaster, would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Please stay safe. Thank you for wearing your masks, and I hope everyone is safe in your trousers.
Thank you, chief. Now we have the fire company's report.
Thank you. East Brandywine Fire Company report for the month of November. We had 56 total incidents, 31 fire calls, 25 medical calls. East Brandywine Township, we had 11 fire calls, we had 11 medical calls, we had an average of 10 personnel in attendance, we held three training sessions with an average of 15 personnel in attendance. As you can see, as you drive by the firehouse, construction continues. The bricklaying on the south side of the building is complete and is rather impressive. We believe that the building is completely under roof now, and that we'll be able to have all the trucks inside for the bad weather. As you drive by each day, there'll be more and more exterior work going on with the biggest thing as the tower will be put into place on Monday and Tuesday, and they're going to have to use two huge cranes to place that tower into place. Cause of note, the fire department was involved with a house fire on Denton Drive in Wallace Township. The ladder truck, the pumper tanker, and the rescue truck responded at 1,500 hours with a total of 19 volunteers, which is just phenomenal with the volunteer base in the area right now. One thing I will say, and also adding on to the happy holidays is, please, when you heat your houses, start your chimneys up for the first time. Be very careful if you see anything out of the ordinary, smell anything out of the ordinary. Do not hesitate to call the fire department, that is what we're there for, and we'll be happy to come mitigate the situation. And have a nice holiday.
Thank you. So now we have the approval of all the reports, including the October 6th Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept all the reports, as well as the Planning Commission meeting's minutes of October 6th.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, the resignation of zoning hearing board member Jim Rosado. Luke?
Yes, thank you. I have sad news this evening. I am here to report that zoning hearing board member Jim Rosado, who has been a member since 2007, has submitted a letter of resignation from his position, which will be effective December 31st, 2021. I want to thank Jim for his many years of service on the zoning hearing board and wish him well with future endeavors. At this time, it would be appropriate for the board to entertain a motion to accept his resignation from the board of supervisor, Board of, zoning hearing board.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to the proposal to prepare additional documentation for the Beaver Mill-Bondsville Mill complex. Jim?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This past June, we submitted an application to the PHMC, Pennsylvania Museum and Historical Commission, for a determination of eligibility for listing the Bondsville Mill community on the National Register. And as I presented back then, the benefit of doing that is that a determination of eligibility provides the opportunity to apply for Keystone Grants to support the building rehabilitation work. We heard back from the PHMC last month, and they have requested more information with regard to the application. That they haven't rejected the application and that they're asking for more information is an indication that they're seriously considering the application, so that's a good thing. The additional information that they're asking for is going to require our consultant to spend some additional time on this. So RGA, our Historic Preservation Consultant for the township, has provided a proposal, which I think is in your packet, and he's estimating that the additional cost of providing this information will be around $1,495 with a not-to-exceed amount of $2,135. So I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of this proposal.
Is this, is this, is this obviously the whole, the Bondsville Mill Committee's, you know, the whole commission's preference?
Yes, we're looking for funding to support the building rehabilitation work, and whatever grants we can get in that area reduce our asks of the township for material costs otherwise.
I have no questions. I'm okay.
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
You know, would you want to do a motion?
Yes. Make a motion to accept the proposal of Jim Buxala to prepare the additional documentation for the Beaver Mill-Bondsville Mill complex.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda is the Downingtown Area School District's request for exoneration, Act 13, Act 319, roll back taxes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm multitasking with the recording. As Supervisor-elect Croft alluded to in the public comment period, we're in receipt of a request for exoneration for seven years' worth of taxes from the Downingtown Area School District. They are preparing to convey the property to a private developer. This is the development known as Brandywine Walk, for which we have a pending final plan approval application before the Planning Commission. Act 319 allows for preferential tax assessment for open space in agricultural use, subject to a provision that when it is conveyed to a private developer, seven years' worth of the taxes become due to the various taxing authorities. If I could do a quick mic check, Solicitor Jonas, are you with us?
I am indeed. Good evening.
Well, yep, just, thank you. I may refer to you on the correct interpretation here. My review indicates that there is no provision of 319 that allows the municipality to waive this tax that are due when a conveyance is going from a school district to a developer. There is, however, a provision of Act 319 that allows us to not collect this tax if it is being conveyed from a private party to a school district. Is that a fair summary?
It is indeed. It is indeed.
Okay. It is therefore my recommendation that we decline, on the grounds that we not authorized to do so, to reimburse the school district for the seven years of taxes.
I'm fine with that. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is the settlement agreement between East Brandywine Township, LNR Partnership LLC, and John Cropper and Brandywine Village Associates Limited and Littleby Partnership. We're here, we're here today to discuss and consider a settlement agreement that has been in the works and to end litigation for 10, 12 years. And is there, I guess we're open up to public comment right now on, on this agenda item?
Before we open up for public comment, I just wanted to know, because when I left for work this morning at 9:00 AM, I didn't have the full copy of it. Is it all said and done? Is this it right now, as of today?
Yeah, this is the completed ones. Before, there was different, various paragraphs. We were working on the last few and some corrections over the last year.
So you're asking us to vote on something that was just finished today?
No, I'm actually asking you to consider something to, that you are part of for the first paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. So you were, we still had to discuss 10, 11, and we already had discussed 12, and 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, or generic.
No, I would disagree. I was there from 1 through 9 in the executive session, and then that was the last of it until today. So you're saying that 9 through, I'm sorry, you're saying so 10 through 22 were changed or altered as of latest today?
No, it was actually spelling mistakes. Kyle, you-
It was changed, correct? Yes?
Kyle, it's been in your email box. It's been, it's been distributed to our council, to you.
When was the final version finished? Today?
I'm going to ask you to lower your voice.
I'm asking you a question, this is a simple answer.
The final, the final typed-up version was today, yes.
Thank you.
Excuse, excuse me? I'm sorry. Yes. It's in the packet, right?
It is the same answer to the question regarding financials.
Can you put it up then, on the board? Because I, I thought that it was in the agenda.
We'll all learn this right now together, I guess.
Kyle, you've been part of this for months now, but you have your opinion.
But, okay.
Sure. We're going to be discussing it paragraph to paragraph, but we can put it up there. So-
I cannot project 13 pages on the screen in a way that anyone could understand it.
Well, we'll just do paragraph to paragraph as we go through it.
Okay. I can project a portion of one page, yes.
Yes, we'll go through it page by page, paragraph by paragraph. And that's why everyone look. So do we have any public, public comment?
All right, so we should go through it first.
That's true. That's a good, that's a good point, Mrs. Ni.
Excuse me, excuse me. Hold on.
I understand.
Supervisor Winters may suggest that if, before we open it to public comment, if you want to give a brief summary of this before we move paragraph by paragraph-
Sure.
And allow, since the public is requesting something to comment on here. Excuse me, sir. We're not open-
Yes, but shouldn't we say it though? Shouldn't it be available for public view, for public comment?
Yes, we're going to be, that's what, I'm sorry, but I thought that it was already available there.
Summary is good. Summary is great, but I like to see the entire thing.
I understand, that's my apology. I thought that we had copies in the agenda, so.
But before we even go there with the paper, wouldn't this be better if we just postponed it until our new collective supervisors are placed?
Unfortunately, no. We will, we're going to be discussing this tonight, so this has been on, this has been on, we've been trying to settle this for years.
Ma'am.
I understand that, but we have been set, we've been trying to settle this litigation for years.
We can do this in an orderly fashion. Supervisor Winters is going to give a summary of the effect of this agreement. I believe Mr. Revan has, is going to, is in the process now of allowing this to be projected so it can be gone through. If there are any questions, paragraph by paragraph, we'll open it for public comment, there will be supervisor discussion, and we can move on from there. I, I'm more than happy to. My name is Gregory Helleniak. I am the special counsel on, for the township on this matter.
And before we do go on, I would-
Can I have your name, though? I do. Yes.
Hi, Jason, I'm Regina Griffith.
Okay, how you doing?
I was going to say before, let's let Luke get caught up before we-
So this agreement, this agreement is, right now, the township has a lot of litigation with BVA, Croppers, LNR Partnership for over a land development application at everyone, I'm assuming that is the Carleño East Brandywine Township, I'm Carleño East Brandywine LP. And it involves, basically, the township, some township cooperation when it comes to the, a federal antitrust case. It involves the township notifying PennDOT that the current applicant that is under appeal through PennDOT is, we would be withdrawing as co-applicant because the applicant does not have site control, and the township cannot issue a building permit for this project. There's an approved use, but as of right now, today, the project won't receive a building permit. There's been some developments in the past, over the past year, with the various DEC actions, various lawsuits that were issued to the township, one being that the excess land that was not used or not necessary for the public road shall be returned to the Comden Knee for the first 10 years. And the township did not do that at first. The township, in part of the application, had signed over permission for the, for Carleño East Brandywine to utilize the condemned land for their project, which was not the purpose of the taking. The purpose of the taking was for a public road. So when this DEC action came in with the risk, we tried to start negotiating, and we came to terms, which we will be discussing. And another part of it, so that's one paragraph, another one is, there's a federal antitrust case that we will be cooperating with BVA, John Cropper, LNR, as to any public records that we would not have them, have to go through the right-to-know 30-day process, that we would cooperate with them fully. Another one is that the, in exchange for the damages for the taking that have not been paid to the Comden Knee, we would require this, we would not condemn the second part of the road, and that we would actually just ensure that the second half of the road will not negatively impact the internal circulation for the existing shopping center, which has been a safety concern from, from, that they've had, they've been, including in their disputes with the township for years now, that the trucks turning off of 322 into their shopping center can't turn into their shopping center without going into the all-coming traffic. And that was a concern of theirs. So with the various things, right now, the township is, is awaiting the Board of View, and we received from BVA's certified appraisals of damages in upwards of $6.6 million. And once that goes before the Board of View, the township is going to have to pay the damages. Um, excuse me, can you not interrupt me? Excuse me, Regina? Please. Thank you. Are you an appraiser? Do you do appraisal work for a living? Well, I think that I would probably trust a certified appraisal than what your opinion is at this, at this juncture, so can you please just be patient? Thank you. So right now, we have, the township's at a point that we have, it's coming down the road. There's going to be a Board of View, and we're going to have to pay the damages. We don't have the money.
Hold on, Jason, I think it's not proper to say we are going to pay the money.
The township is required to pay the damages, whatever the final determination is.
One party's determination, though. I think you need to be clear. This is one party's determination.
I'm sorry. It's, it's a certified appraisal.
The concept here is, in exchange for the claims to the damages alleged by BVA and LNR, the township recognizing the risk of, of those damages is taking that into consideration in the settlement agreement.
Yes.
And those damages are alleged to be at the numbers that Supervisor Winters has stated.
Thank you. And so whatever the damages are, end up being, the township will be paying those damages. We don't have any security to pay those damages. We have $125,000.
What, real quick, what was the township's appraisal value?
The township does not have an appraisal for the full 10-acre parcel.
Luke, what was our appraisal value?
Kyle, we're not going to be, can we just get through this, and then we can discuss? We're going to discuss this. We're discussing it in a general right now.
But you're giving one side.
Greg, would you like to do the general summary then, and then that way we can open it up? Because I'm just trying to, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not, you know, I can, my way is to go paragraph by paragraph, I'm sorry. It could take me a while.
Whole, whole picture of what's, what's involved.
I'm happy to present the contents of, of the settlement agreement, but I believe we're, that there may be comments that any supervisor may have on the motivations or considerations that went into this in, in reaching these terms. So I'll stick to what- So I'll stick to what's on the paper so the public is aware of what is contained in here, the obligations going both ways. And then I'll leave it to the supervisors to comment on the considerations and motivations.
That'd be great.
So this agreement is between the township and the entities that we'll refer to as LNR Partnership, Mr. John Cropper, and Brandywine Village Associates LLP.
Greg, before you go on, though, I think it's important. Could you let us know, did you write this agreement?
He reviewed the agreement, Kyle.
Okay, but this is important for the audience to know. Did you write this?
This was not drafted by my office, but as Mr. Winters did say, I did review the agreement prior to the meeting.
Who drafted this basic agreement?
This was drafted by representatives of both sides.
Both sides.
Kyle, if you don't remember.
Township and LNR and BVA.
Okay, got it.
Yes, I was the board member that you and George appointed to head up the settlement talks. Sorry, Greg, go ahead.
So for the public's knowledge, there are several, if I will characterize as many actions involving the township and the entities referenced, LNR and BVA, Brandywine Village Associates, for everyone's reference. As Supervisor Winters first referenced, there are, the two items relate to the condemnation of land and other interests for the installation of the connector road between Guthrie'sville Road and Horseshoe Pike. LNR and BVA both filed actions known as juries of view that are used to determine the valuation of both the land that was condemned and taken and its effect on the remaining tracks. As part of this settlement agreement, both those actions would be marked settled upon under the terms of this settlement agreement. And those, the pursuit of any additional damages on top of the compensation already paid by the township for those condemned interests would be settled. Furthermore, there is an action related to the condemnation procedure itself for the piece of land, pieces of land taken from BVA and LNR that would also be marked as settled. And there would be no more contest over the process of condemnation. There is also an action related to the construction of the proposed road and any requirements related to public bidding and compliance with the prevailing Wage Act, Wage Act, that would be settled as part of this, that would, and as well. There is a PennDOT administrative appeal that was filed by Brandywine Village Associates and LNR against both Carlino and East Brandywine Township, related to the highway occupancy permit, particularly for the Route 322 area that is still under appeal. The township is no longer a party. However, the township would be obligated to notify PennDOT that the plan that is in dispute that affects Route 322 does not comply with the township's ordinances as been determined by the supervisors. There is a, these, there are multiple actions related to the same cause of facts. There is an additional action related to these cause of facts that entitles LNR and BVA to statutory damages. If they were to be successful, that would also be marked settled, discontinued, and ended. As Supervisor Winters mentioned, there is a federal antitrust action that the township would be agreeing to comply fully in providing any documentation related to the facts of that matter and making supervisors available for any testimony related to the facts of that matter. There's a similar state court issue that the township would cooperate in a similar way. As for the LNR parcel, the condemnation of a piece of the LNR parcel is alleged to affect the density that that parcel may be developed at. The township is agreeing to allow development of that parcel at the density that was permitted based on the requirements of the zoning ordinance at the time or prior to condemnation. As Supervisor Winters mentioned, there's an obligation of the township to direct the construction of the remaining, remainder of the connector road in a manner that provides safe access and truck-turning radii from the connector road into the existing BVA Crops Marketplace Shopping Center. We have already discussed the assessment of risk related to the disputed damages. There is also requirements for the township in recognition of that risk of certain development concepts for the Crops Marketplace property that include various improvements to that site. And I believe that the rest of this is fairly boilerplate language. And that relates to the major issues that this settlement agreement covers.
Thank you.
Can you scroll up a couple lines?
Up?
No, the other way.
Sure.
That is, I believe, the summary of the settlement agreement. My recommendation on moving forward is one of two things. Even, either there are, as we discussed, comments from the supervisors, or is typical under moving forward procedure, prior to any comment, both from the board or the public, a motion of whether to continue to consider this agreement tonight.
We haven't done that. So we were already talking about, so basically, we can open it up for, if you guys want to talk about it briefly ourselves, and then we can open up the public comment, and then we can end it talking ourselves, and then we would decide whatever.
So.
I would like to just understand what all liabilities are in this agreement.
The liability to the taxpayers of this township, it's not gonna be, in a second, one second. It's not going to cost the taxpayers any money.
How can you say that? You have a lawsuit coming by developer. How can you say there's no liability?
There's no, as far as I'm talking, can I finish?
I'm asking a question. It's a simple question.
We already knew that that was gonna be a liability going into this when we talked about it, Kyle.
The suit just happened yesterday. How did we know about it?
You know what? You're right. I didn't find out that I was being personally sued by Carlino East Brandywine until yesterday at 4:00 PM. And.
You got that news, sir, and then I got the finished agenda.
But is the lawsuit covered by insurance?
Yes, the lawsuit's covered by insurance. The damages, excuse me.
Ask Luke that. Luke's the person who answered this question, and you are.
Insurance carrier will cover the damages for lawsuits for the township if they're covered. Did our insurance carrier, did you speak with them?
I spoke with our insurance agent, and I reported the claim to our insurance carrier. The insurance carrier has not made a determination.
Oh.
About the coverage of the loss, nor recommended counsel to represent the township in this matter.
Say it again. They did not recommend?
No. No. They have acknowledged receipt of the claim and have not made a determination.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Right now, we got sued yesterday at 4:00 PM. The township was sued for breach of contract, meaning we are affecting an approved land development plan. But that's not, that's not true. The township isn't, is not interfering with anyone's approved plan. The township is following the Pennsylvania state laws. When Pennsylvania Amendment Code, Section 310, says, "Any land condemned not used for the purpose of the condemnation shall first be offered back to the Comden Knee for the first 10 years, 20 years if it's an agricultural property." So being that there's a sewer lateral that was not even approved at the time of the approval of this giant on the township land, that was not part of the declaration of taking. That's not a public purpose. The Department of, DEP, Jonathan Ezial, actually, back in 2013, advised Scott Pierceall, our manager at the time, to remove that sewer line from that parcel because it is not a public purpose. And that we did not have the right to do that. So the township did require the applicant to not, to remove the sewer line. And there's gonna be a pump station going up 322, down to North Guthrie'sville Road, then following that north to the Brookhaven's manhole. As far as, you know, a lot of people are gonna say that we're interfering with the plan, but at the end of the day, the applicant doesn't have site control. What happened was, when the township condemned the land based off of the applicant's engineering, they didn't condemn all the land necessary. There's a strip of land along 322 that the township does not own, and the applicant, Carlino East Brandywine, does not own. There's another, when we returned the land to them, that was, this wasn't a decision that was from the board. Our own township engineer, Nate from Pinoni, Nate Klein from Pinoni, made that determination. This land is not necessary for this road. He's the one that came up with the legal description. He's the one that came up with the meets and bounds. It wasn't the supervisors. It wasn't anyone trying to conspire against Carlino or conspire against BVA, or, we're trying to settle this. It's been 10 years. The township has a real risk here with a certified appraisal at $6.6 million. And Greg will agree, as we have an executive session, that a certified appraisal, it's by the same company that the township can use. We can just take that appraisal and say, get one more, and then these are the two we're using because it's certified. So the damages are real, and the can's been kicked down the road and kicked down the road. But at the end of the day, it's not a buildable plan right now. He hasn't approved use. But I don't think anyone in this audience would be okay with the township approving a building permit on your property. Our ordinances don't allow that. It's, this is, this isn't about, you know, what's, it's about liability, number one, for the taxpayers. This agreement, we're getting out of the just compensation. We are getting out of having to possibly pay BVA, LNR for the damages of $6.6 million. Whether you, Regina, wanna agree that it's $6.6, you know what $6.6 million does or is? I don't, I can't make the determination, but I do know that the township does not have that money. The township does not have that financial security from the applicant. It has been an issue since day one. We had an opportunity a year, two years ago, when there is a, these developer agreements were signed at the 24th hour, to actually get more security. I was there. I asked the applicant, "Mr. Miller, you're not gonna, you're not gonna screw the township because you're liable to pay for these just compensation." Whatever the final damages are, you, in this agreement, this MOU from 2014 that Judge Griffith has already determined is not enforceable. The MOU is not enforceable, guys. The judge didn't just opine that in his order. He provided case law. It's contract zoning. You can't do that. So here's the township, we have something, we have a problem, and it's not this board. Kyle wasn't there. I wasn't there. George wasn't there. Luke wasn't there. We're stuck with this mess. We're trying to do the best we can. And at the end of the day, we could settle every lawsuit with this agreement. It doesn't negatively affect Carlino East Brandywine's plan. They have to come back and re-engineer their plan anyway, to redo their stormwater, to relocate their sewer line, and their planning module approval. They have to redo the outfall for their stormwater that's on the township property. And we didn't do this. This is the state law that we, all the agreements, the developer agreements, the conditions of approval that the applicant signed himself says that he will abide by our ordinances, and his plan will continue to abide by our ordinances. It doesn't adhere to our ordinances right now, today. So this settlement agreement's not going to cause any damage like this lawsuit says. It's claiming that this applicant giant has reimbursed the township for $1.5 million of legal fees and engineering fees.
I would stick to the settlement agreement.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm getting a little off track, sorry. So anyway, the settlement agreement, it resolves this. It has, as far as the taxpayers' money, what I meant, Kyle, was, on this side of us settling, there's a damage of $6.6 million. Whether you wanna agree or not, if it gets split down the middle, say $3 million, 3.3, just say $2 million.
Well, there's a huge difference between $2 million, $3 million, $4 million, and $6 million.
Kyle.
The point is, you're using a number given to you by a party who is suing the township.
No, actually, Greg, can you please, can you please explain to Kyle what a certified appraisal is, that we can, it's by the same company we use?
I've been around a lot longer than you have in this township, but I can tell you, there are two sides to every story. One party might give an appraisal value of, I believe the township had it appraised at a couple hundred thousand dollars. To have somebody come out and say $6 million, we're not even apples to apples.
But that's why, because what happened was, I'll explain this a little bit, Kyle, really quick. With the township, to determine the just compensation, the damages originally, what we're gonna pay the applicant for us taking LNR's property, they didn't appraise it as the highest and best use at that time of when we took it of a 10-acre parcel. I know because it was my grandmother's property. It's 10 acres there. We took 1.8 acres. And what did we get an appraisal on? To determine what we're gonna pay these landowners? We asked the appraisal company to only appraise 1.8 acres as that swampland. So that's why the value was so low, Kyle. It doesn't include the other eight acres. That, and unfortunately, at that time, a 10-acre parcel was required to do high-density townhome complex. And that developer who purchased that land is no longer able to do that. So when it comes to the appraisals, the appraisals are what the appraisals are. We have no security right now. We, we don't have anything. So I would, you know, I don't understand. You were at that, no, you were at that meeting, Kyle, when I asked Peter Miller if he was gonna screw the township or if he was gonna keep paying his bills when the final damages came. He goes, "Oh, I'm gonna pay the township. I'm gonna pay all my bills." Well, I said, "Well, that's fine." Because the state RACP grant that you awarded required you to do a personal guarantee. So please, can you personally sign that you're gonna pay all of our damage? And he would not do that. There's liability because, as well as Carlino East Brandywine LP could assign, could assign that contract to Carlino East Brandywine Management Company, like it says in his flowchart, and then it could assign it for 99 years at $2,000 a year. And we have no legal standing then to go after Carlino after we pay whatever the damages are. I'm saying whether they be $2 million, $6 million, whatever it is. But I think we can all agree, it's more than $125,000. And this agreement here, this settlement agreement resolves all of our litigation, except for the lawsuit that was just filed to us, which was a breach of this contract, which, it's not a breach. We're following law. The other one was collusion between board members.
Let's stick it to this settlement, this agenda item.
Yes. Sure. Can I ask for your name, please?
Here, you know my name. It's Peter Miller.
It's just for the record, though.
Yeah. I've been coming here for 10 years, so I think everybody knows my name. I have notes that I wanted to say, but what you've just demonstrated, you've turned this into a banana republic in, what, two or three years, the two of you running this place?
What does that mean?
I cannot believe, I cannot believe, I just, I'm gonna.
Public comment, sorry.
Okay. Despite our repeated requests, this is the first time I'm seeing this document. We did file a complaint against the two supervisors and the township for violating our development agreement, our MOU and our approved plan. So that's true, and we'll follow through. The court doesn't allow lame-duck boards, which you are one, to make these kind of decisions on the behalf of the township. This is really two rogue board members. George, who wasn't duly elected, nominated himself through a convoluted procedure because of a departure of a prior duly-elected supervisor. And Jason, I think you're singularly the least qualified person in this room to be in the seat you're in. I do. You have extensive legal problems, DWI conviction.
Mr. Miller, can you keep it to the agenda item?
Excuse me, excuse me. No, I'll handle this. It's fine.
You just don't have credibility. You just don't have credibility.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What is your experience? I'm not going to go there, you know what, you've made your comment, is that it?
No, no.
Mr. Miller, can you please keep it to the agenda item?
Yeah, yeah.
He's going to keep it to the agenda item. I understand, George.
What's happened, what's happened is these two supervisors have colluded with Paul Prince and Eleanor and BVA to violate our agreements with the township. Thus, we filed the complaint.
Ma'am?
Okay?
Please.
This is all about...
I know, but it's not your public comment right now.
This is all about croppers inability to compete, wanting to maintain a monopoly. That's what this is about, that's what it's always been about. You cannot compete, your client cannot compete in the open market. That's the truth. And this lame duck session should be happy holidays and merry Christmas. Instead, you're trying to leave the township with this legal debacle and financial liability, and it is. You literally don't know what you're talking about in the Board of View or the condemnation. You just don't. I've said that to you in public cases before. So, you're going to leave the township in this lame duck session with this financial bomb because you know you're going to lose control of the board. That's what's happening. So, you're leaving, why is this a problem for the township? You're creating an open-ended liability for these residents. And you know it, and you're about to lose control of the board, and the rule of law will once again reign in East Brandywine, and that's a problem for you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Yes. Can you state your name, please?
Mr. Chairman, Paul Prince. I'm the fellow whose character has just been impugned, and I certainly hope that the tape is on. Ladies and gentlemen, I didn't expect to speak tonight, but I feel it's necessary to make a few comments to clear the air. First of all, this process, and I've been at this, this march will be 12 years, appearing before this panel, trying to resolve these matters. A number of years ago, in one of those attempts, Kyle Schreider came up with a proposal, we met, we met in this room, and we accepted the proposal, and Mr. Kaplan initially accepted the proposal on behalf of his client, and Mr. Miller called him back, whispered in his ear, and Mr. Kaplan stood up and rejected it. And that's okay. I'm not being pejorative with Mr. Miller, he has that right. He's a principal in the developer who's seeking to develop the property. The problem I have is that, A, they file a lawsuit, and the purpose of the lawsuit, let's not be mistaken, it asked to enjoin, to enjoin a governmental body that you all elected from voting tonight. It sought to enjoin them from even having this discussion in front of you tonight. They didn't want you or your elected representatives to vote on this matter. That's not the way, that's not the way I see democracy working in this country. And I hope to God, when we say liberty and justice for all, that's what it means. This agreement is a long, hard-fought agreement to resolve all the disputes with the township, all of them. Mr. Winters is right. My clients have waived all damages against the township, all damages. It really doesn't matter whether it's 2 million, 3 million or 6 million. They agreed to give it up all. Secondly, they agree not only to give up the damages, but we agreed to give all of you a release and the township a release from the beginning of the world to today. Whatever the township did, whatever your representatives did, we forgive it. At law, we forgive it. We agree we will never sue you for it, and we waive all damages and liability. What's more? It needs to be understood that this is not contrary to Carlino's development. In fact, there is a provision in that agreement that says that if they want to participate in it, we'll all sign releases. They only have to do two things, only two things. Number one, agree with us, all the lawsuits are over, done, finished. And number two, in exchange for that, believe it or not, BVA and Eleanor agree, they will not object to any development application they file for their property. Contractually binding agreement not to object before the planning commission, before the zoning hearing board, before the Board of Supervisors, whatever plan they submit, we won't object. Now, if you think somehow that prejudices or is contrary to the interests of Carlino and his development, I would like to know how. Because what we're trying to do is end this. This has gone on for 12 years. It has cost millions of dollars, millions. That's what's been spent already by all of the parties, millions of dollars that would have been better being invested in this township than going into courts, lawyers, judges and everybody else. And I'm a lawyer standing here telling you that. It's ruined the health of people, it's ruined the family relationships of people, and it's taken time from everybody, from both sides, not just from my client's side, from both sides.
Mr. Prince.
This, I'm almost done. This was a hard-fought effort to finally bring this to a conclusion. So, what I say to you at this moment, this is a come-to-Jesus opportunity, and what better time to do it? Here may be the last chance to bring this to an end. I ask you all, pick up the cudgel, act, settle this. It can't hurt the township, it doesn't hurt Carlino, it helps all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Actually, Mr. Miller, the other gentleman.
Wait, hold on a second.
Actually, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller?
The other gentleman.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, I'm telling you, you're not talking right now, he is. You had your opportunity. This isn't going back and forth, back and forth.
My name's Dennis Delaney, I've been in the township now eight-plus years. I've followed a lot of the back and forth, attended a lot of meetings, and the one thing I can't believe is happening right now, whoever's right, whoever's wrong, these documents the township hasn't seen, Kyle hasn't seen, to vote on it right now is ridiculous. My background is engineering, I have an MBA, there's probably people in here that are accountants, that are other, you know, folks with other more detailed engineering than me, and then probably could look through these documents and give some good insight so that the three of you could do something, which we can't do that tonight, scanning through, getting the brief glimpses. So, I would recommend that this gets published online, made available to everybody to see, and it gets voted on, whether it's in January or February, but it's not tonight, it's stupid.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaney, can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
I'd like to ask you a question here.
About the email I sent you, George?
Yeah, it is.
I sent George an email last night after I saw that this was coming up to just say, "George, you know, think of your reputation ongoing, but if need be, I think there could be a class action lawsuit if you push this through."
Hold on, hold on, I'd like to, I'd like to read it.
You're so opinionated, you didn't see the agreement?
Hold it, supervisors, this isn't...
But why are you so opinionated, you didn't see the agreement?
No, hold on.
This isn't an opportunity for interrogation of the, of the public.
Okay, it was not an opportunity to interrogate us either.
It is, he can make his comments.
I just, two things, Dennis, yeah, you sent me two, you sent one email to me, "I will personally sue you and Jason if you attempt some slimy last-minute rule changes that cost township residents." And you just heard it's not costing township residents.
What, what I've heard...
I'm sure I can find a large number of others that make it a class action.
George, what I have...
Let me speak, you spoke, let me speak, please. I resent the email, but more importantly, you followed up and sent an email similar to this to 52 of my golfing buddies.
Excuse me, don't interrupt them.
I'm talking. 52 guys that play golf with me, and you smeared my name with them.
I did not mention your name in the email that went out. The email that I sent...
I actually would like to have a copy of that email that he smeared me on, though, George, thank you.
The email that I cast along...
This, we're not going to see, excuse me.
...that has gone out to a lot of people.
We're, we're beyond the agenda item here.
No.
And I, let's, let's not...
The real agenda item is, how is this happening so fast? And with me being here eight years, I have seen a lot of court cases that have gone between the two parties in this. And in virtually every case, I've seen the cropper's side lose. So, now we have a settlement that's written by the cropper's side for that, and it might be right, but if it isn't, I don't know why we're rushing it.
Mr. Delaney, thank you.
One last question, Dennis, do you have any affiliation with Giant?
No.
Does any of your relatives have an affiliation? Does your son-in-law...
George.
No, he's entitled to, Greg, I'm going to let him, I'm going to let him ask this question.
I shop croppers, I shop Giant.
Your son-in-law doesn't work on behalf of Carlino Giant?
Oh, my goodness.
No. My son-in-law works for Panini.
For the township.
The township has, and he is so above board that if something comes up, he will tell me, "I can't talk about it now." And once it's public record, he then might fill me in on things. But I think that it's a great firm and the township's done a good thing by having him.
Pinoni?
I appreciate the defamation.
Thank you.
This will be quick, this is really...
Mr. Miller, excuse me, you've already commented, sit down. No, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller.
You've heard me, sit down, please.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, sit down.
We're happy to...
Sit down, Mr. Miller, sit.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller.
Chief, if he keeps this up, chief, have him escort him out. Escort him out.
He had, hold on, ladies and gentlemen, there are procedures and there's order to this portion of the meeting. Everyone has their turn to speak, when they've made their comment, they've, they've fulfilled their, their time slot. You have an opportunity to speak, this is not crowd yelling, this is not approaching the board with, with screams and protests. Everyone in this room, if you choose, can take your five minutes and make your public comment. We'll do that one at a time in an orderly fashion.
So, we have five minutes instead of three?
No, we're actually going to, depending on the, we're not doing five minutes, we're not doing anything, we're doing...
I object, you allowed Mr. Prince to speak much longer, so everybody has the right to speak the same time.
Mr. Croft, he's the attorney for the, for the, one of the litigants. So, what is my point?
Can, can we, can we please move to the next public comment?
Who, Paul was not allowed to speak? Sure. Three minutes, yes. That's because I allowed him to. I wanted to hear what he was saying so I can make the best decision I can. Is there a problem? He is the attorney. If it depends, it depends, Mrs. Nye, it really depends on if you're going to be ignorant, you're going to raise your voice inappropriate, no, I'm not really going to allow that. Regina has already made enough comments from her chair over there.
Well, that's what I do.
Well, you know what, that's not what we do.
Well...
We are a government municipality and we want things in order.
This is now my public...
Excuse me.
My three minutes.
Excuse me, I'm talking. I don't think that you have a simple little bit of respect to not interrupt people, not interrupt me. I'm trying to run this meeting the best I can, Regina, and guess what? The people did not elect you, okay? This past election you ran, it was a good election, you did not get elected. No, no, that's the, that is a truth.
Chairman, Chairman, can we, can we...
Let, let, whoa, 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 let me respond to this, please.
No. You want to, I mean, I'm saying, you didn't get elected.
Mr. Winters, let her...
Well, Jason, let me respond, please. I have my three minutes, let me have that.
Yep, that's fine.
I did not get elected, obviously, but I am okay with the results of that election because Kyle and Carl are two people who have always had the best interest of the township at heart, and we have not seen that among the three board members for a very long time. With respect to this proposed settlement, I heard Luke say that the claim was filed with the insurance carrier, but the insurance carrier has not come back and given a green light as to whether or not they will cover the $6 million in damages.
We don't have $6 million damages, we don't have to pay that, that's being settled tonight, Regina.
No.
Hold on, excuse me, just to clarify, what Luke was speaking of was the lawsuit that was filed this week, not about the jury of view or any damages related to condemnation.
And is the township a party to that lawsuit?
The one, which one?
The one that you just referenced.
They're the party to all these lawsuits.
Okay, so, anyway, we're now a party to all these losses. I'd like to go back and revisit when we first started talking about this giant deal. We were all given assurances that there were provisions within the agreements, that we would be indemnified against any damages, against any losses, that we were going to stay out of it. And tonight, I'm sitting here, well, actually, for the last six or seven months, I've been sitting here wondering, how did we get here? What happened to all those protections? What happened to all those assurances that we were given that we would not be here today in this particular situation? I also want to suggest that until we have an answer from insurance carriers or until we know what the real number is that we're looking at with respect to all these legal matters, where's the money going to come from? And why do we have to settle this tonight? You said this has been going on for 12 years, I accept that, it's been going on for 12 years. So, why in 24 hours do we have to sign a settlement?
You have your right to your comment, you done?
Well, I'm asking a question, why do we have to do this now?
We've been working on this for years. I haven't seen you at a township meeting to discuss anything.
I call in, Jason, I know what's going on.
I know, but Regina, we're settling it tonight, if, I don't know if we are or not, we're going to put up for vote, but we're discussing the settlement proposal that we, the township can do.
Then I'm going to ask that our newly-elected supervisors, Kyle and Carl, take the appropriate action and file the petition with the Pennsylvania State Senate to have you removed as a supervisor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Anthony Damiano. I've been a resident of East Brandywine Township for, for 30 years now. I also happen to be the chairman of the zoning and hearing board of this township, and I understand that we've been sued this, just this week. I also understand that the complaint was forwarded to our insurance carrier. My thought is that we give the insurance carrier the opportunity to review the, the complaint and to see whether there's any coverage going to be afforded under our insurance policies. And pending that decision, that we tabled this issue, and with that, I yield the remainder of my five minutes to Mr. Miller.
I'm sorry, but we're not doing that. Mr. Miller already spoke.
You're not doing, you don't want him, you don't want...
He already spoke.
I'm sorry.
He did say he did not want to do it, so I think we're good. Thank you for yielding. Okay, good, because I'll stand here and talk for another five minutes if I can.
Sure.
Just no reason to waste anybody's time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Meleniac and the township that's here. My name is Thomas Reese, spelled R-E-E-S, I'm with the firm of High Swartz in Norristown. I'm here because my law partner, David Bruman, could not be here, and I, we are counsel, co-counsel along with Mr. Prince for the people I will call the Brandywine, BVA parties, Brandywine Village Associates Parties. I want to make one very quick point of law, it may not even take one minute. Under Pennsylvania law, it is legitimate for a Board of Supervisors to approve a settlement agreement while they are quote lame duck supervisors after an election and before a new Supervisors Board gets sworn in. There's a case called TH Properties versus Upper Salford Board of Supervisors, Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania, 2008, 970 Atlantic Second. 2008, 970 Atlantic, 2nd, 495, if you want to take that down, Mr. Honeak. And it specifically says that a municipality, a board of supervisors, can approve a settlement because it's settlement litigation, it's not a contract for employment or a contract for services. They may settle the litigation and the settlement will be binding even if that settlement occurs in December and a new board takes over in January. And in this specific case, settlement was approved December 10th. One of the people who voted in favor of the settlement had been defeated in the election. A new supervisors' board came in in January, it's a three supervisors' board, just like your township. And there was an attempt made to try to overturn the settlement and that attempt lost. So I'm here simply to set that point of law before you. I am aware of the lawsuit that has been filed by the Carlino firm. I have read the papers and we will respond to the papers and we will respond with extensive citations to this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How you doing?
Hi, my name's Beth Watts, I live here in the township, we've been here for 10 years. I have to say, I'm not an attorney. I've been following the case, in the reports, and while I may not understand all of the specifics, my concern is that there, as was mentioned prior, it appears that most of the lawsuits that have already gone through the court systems have already been determined in favor of the township rather than Carlino, not that I'm taking sides. I'm just trying to be mindful of what we're doing with our township dollars, because my taxes are going to be that. In addition, it feels very rapid that this is coming up, 4:00 PM yesterday, and we're just now only partially getting to review documents that we haven't had a chance to review. Granted, I know I don't have the ability to make that final determination, but I don't feel like we're really being given the opportunity to weigh in. It feels quite emotional tonight, and I would hate to think that we're making a rush to judgment and an emotional decision on something that requires more review. I would propose that this actually gets a better review and we look at this later.
This has been vetted, thank you. This has been vetted by our attorneys. We are the elected supervisors for the township to make the best decisions we can for our residents. We don't take anything lightly. As far as the litigation is, the other stuff with the township, that has not been concluded. The, although the condemnation has been upheld, the damages haven't been figured out yet. So the land use has been approved and, and is, is adjudicated, but not, we have several other lawsuits that are, are just started, from BVA, from LNR, and, and now one from Peter Miller, Carlino. So, thank you.
I'm Hannah Jensen. I've been here for about 25 years, and I will say this very clearly, ever since that the township supervisors changed a few years back, the tension in the township among the leadership have been a little bit off. That's number one. Number two, I would like us to more talk about what the real issue is, which is, somebody does not want croppers to have competition. And I can see that's what's happening. And I think that the reason it's taken 12 years to deal with this is because the, the village, Brandywine Village Associates and LNR have put the stick in the wheel forever. Every time there had been a judgment, a new lawsuit came up, and we all know this. And actually, the end of this, in about 21, I think the latest, or maybe it was 20, the last judgment was actually in benefit for the township and not for BVA. That's all I have to say, and I really wish that you would wait for this vote here, because it's gonna stink, and you know that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jay Fisher, 11 Clover Lane. As you gentlemen are aware, I was sitting in your seats when this plan first came to the township, and I was involved for most of those 12 years and all that went on with respect to this plan. And I can agree with you about one thing at least, Mr. Winters, and that is, that this is a very complex situation. There are multiple lawsuits against multiple different parties, all of which have potential liability for the people involved. However, and I also agree with Mr. Prince that this thing should be settled. I thought that 10 years ago, I thought that eight years ago, six years ago. I thought Mr. Scribner got us very close to settling this when he made a Herculean effort to do so. But my primary point to you gentlemen tonight is, you cannot settle with one party. The only practical, safe way for the township to bring this to a conclusion is if you have a global settlement with all the parties involved. Otherwise, you're exposing yourself to liability from the parties that are not included in the settlement agreement. And that is not a prudent way for you to act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Croft, Sussex Place, a 42-year resident. I'm gonna try not to be, to antagonize anybody, but I want to give a little background. I am the, who we elected the supervisor. On Monday afternoon, late afternoon, I guess around dinnertime, I noticed that this item went on the agenda for the first time. Once it went on agenda, I checked with my attorney and he said it's now public record. I filed a right-to-no request on Tuesday morning to try to get a copy of this agreement. I was denied.
Mr. Croft, as a point, as a point, you were not denied. The township has not ruled on your request yet.
Right, you haven't ruled on it, it's the same thing as being denied.
No, it's not the same thing, and I, I just want to be clear.
I'm here to be confrontational. Your point and my point, you can have your ideas, I have my ideas.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just correcting your statement, thank you.
I stand by my statement, and he didn't correct my statement. They wouldn't give it to me. I was not given access until 3:00 PM today. I understand the agreement wasn't finished until around noon today. So I don't care how many years you've been working on it, to come to a meeting and have a such settlement, I mean, I have all these notes down here. Actually, Mr. Fisher summed up exactly what I was gonna say, so I don't want to keep people who are late, any later than they have to be. But it is a one-sided agreement, may be a good agreement, but you need time to analyze it. And nobody's talked about, nobody's talked about the fact that the other side, which does have an approved land plan, by doing a couple of the contingencies, they can apply for a building permit. So you don't think that they're not gonna sue you if you go and settle all this? Part of the settlement, if you, once you get a copy of it, once you see it, is it forces the road, the connector road, westward into their property that they own.
It does not, it doesn't move it at all.
Mr. Prince?
For Mr. Prince, you had so much time-
Mr. Croft, I will address Mr. Prince.
Sorry.
Thank you. So the only logical thing, and I won't go through all my comments and all that, everybody else has done it, you've done a great job in summarizing, and I appreciate that so that we could move forward. But it just, to me, it defies logic and common sense, that this isn't tabled so that there could be more time to analyze this. How many hours have you had to analyze this?
I've had three hours now, starting at 5:00 o'clock when I got home from work. I got it today at 12:30, the final draft.
Kyle, when were you given the other stuff? The other, the beginning of it, this is in parts. You've, you've reviewed every paragraph, it's been, it's been given to you.
The other stuff doesn't matter.
Supervisors, supervisors, Mr. Croft has the floor right now.
Right, the other stuff doesn't matter, it's when you get the final draft. So anyway, I, I beg, I urge, whatever you can do, table it so we can study it, and I understand, I actually was a licensed appraiser for a while, I understand appraisals. So it depends what criteria you give an appraiser. So that, to me, you have to go in and really analyze that appraiser. The same appraiser can appraise the same property many different ways based on what assumptions you give the appraiser. One of the things I find most egregious in here is allowing a development that violates our zoning as part of the settlement. And that's the eight acres in the, I guess that's north or east part of, part of the property, the LNR property. That doesn't mean it can't happen, but just to give it to them. It also says in there in the small print, we waive all impact, traffic impact fees, and what else is waived in there?
We only waive-
Oh, the sewer connection fees.
Yep.
So there's a lot of little landmines in here that I think postponing it, tabling it, that is, so it can be really looked at-
Mr. Croft?
Be the appropriate thing to do.
Your time has expired.
Well, I have a lot of time yet to base my, but I am finished.
I know you will, but for this evening, your time is expired.
No, no, I-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Leonard Blair, and I'm an owner of BVA and LNR, and you people have no idea of what you're talking about. This gentleman came here-
Mr. Blair, this is public comment to the board.
Okay. Peter Miller and, and, and your former township manager here started a group of meetings breaking the Sunshine Act, multiple times. You don't know what the Sunshine Act is, but it means it's supposed to be brought out in the open. It was not. In there, they had discussed, okay, what to do with my property and what they needed from my property. They did not have enough ground of their own to develop the property the way they wanted. So they worked on removing my easements and taking ground. They took almost 400 feet wide for a 30-foot wide road, think about that! What was that? Then, two years ago, Mr. Scribner there-
Mr. Blair, can you please lower, lower the voice?
Mr. Scribner there assigns the rights, along with Jay Fisher here, okay, that they can have it in perpetual, okay, for their use, okay? I'm not here to give my property to another developer.
Mr. Blair, your voice.
Okay, I'm not here to give my property to another developer. This thing has cost me a fortune. I have my family over here and members of our company, okay? We have all struggled with this for a very smart developer and a township that wanted a free road. That free road has cost me more than $16 million in losses to date that I had to spend to contrary it, okay? I'm gonna read a little thing about the settlement, okay, 'cause everybody wants to tear it apart. It is an excellent settlement for the township, it's a win-win for the township, it doesn't cost anything, and it generates funds for the township. Today, the proposal in front of you, in front of the board, would allow a settlement to extinguish multiple lawsuits against the township, eliminating damages estimated as high as 6.5 million. They are otherwise payable by the township and receive the acreage at no additional cost. We're willing to give you the road at no cost. In other words, Mr. Miller will get a refund. Development thereby allows, on LNR land, we generate income from township fees, transfer tax, and real estate taxes over time in millions. This is an absolute win-win for the township, bringing positive cash flow, covering all road costs, stopping township's legal expenses to defend against suits, and removing all liability from the township taxpayers. Let me be clear, what was done to us was evil and morally wrong. Taking of someone's property to enrich a competitor developer. This has damaged the lives of the owners and family members for 12 years. The stress, the health, the financial drain, and time, of time consumption, and even the loss of sleep and anger generated has been unbearable. So let me ask you, Carl, or Kyle, would you find this acceptable if it happened to you?
Your time, I'll let you talk.
You can't answer. What did we do to deserve this? We did nothing to deserve this, because no one from the township has ever taken the time to tell me what I did wrong. What did we do wrong?
Mr. Blair, your time's expired.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
George Frank, Prizer Court in Apple Cross. I'd like to ask counsel, how long has your firm been on this case?
Would you like me to answer that?
Sure.
Our firm was, I believe, appointed in October or November of last year.
Okay, so our township council has not been involved in it. Have they weighed in on this at all?
Yes, they were distributed the-
And they're in agreement to this?
Provided comments, yes.
And what do you feel is legal is our financial risk?
I've provided my comments to the supervisors.
Well, I think, wouldn't that be public knowledge?
No, I cannot, I, I have provided my comments, which are privileged, under attorney-client privilege, to my clients, and, and that's as far as I can disclose.
Well, wouldn't the public risk be held to us accountable at the end of the day? That could fall back on us as township residents?
That's what we're here to discuss is the risk, we've already discussed it through multiple times tonight.
Okay. I've heard both sides, and I also have heard a lot of smoke and mirrors up front, but what really bothers me the most is the fact that we don't have all the informa-, you don't have all the information. Apparently, the three of you that run this township don't have all the information.
How do you, how do you say that, though?
I listened to a supervisor in public stating it, and I've been to enough of these meetings to see, to see the same thing happen over and over, it's my time.
I understand.
And I'll tell you right now, my personal opinion is, if you two vote on this tonight, that's another collect of your duties.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay.
I would like to make a comment if I could now. Okay, so first of all, just to piggyback off of, off of BVA's side about sunshine law violations, I do personally believe that sunshine law violation did occur in the transition of this said agreement. It's for another day to discuss, but I believe that a sunshine law violation did occur between the two supervisors to my right. I did get that in writing from both of our legal councils, that there was a possible sunshine law violation, so I did want to point that out. Second, we are here to discuss a settlement agreement that was written by Paul Prince, an attorney who is with his clients, has sued this township many times, to count myself included federally. Federally sued, as well as Supervisor Fisher. Supervisor Winters was the other person who, who helped write this document, and he knows very little bit about law, as he is a contractor. The township legal councils from two different firms recommend not entering this agreement. This is a recommendation I was given in various emails. Law firms have warned Supervisor Winters and Attorney Paul Prince not to speak to each other unless represented by township council, yet both remain defiant and continue to do so. In fact, as part of this agreement, Supervisor Winters shared private executive session notes with Mr. Prince with no authorization from the board.
I actually take, I actually take-
I'll let my finish, please. With no authorization from the board, these notes were shared with Mr. Prince by Supervisor Winters, therefore creating a conflict of interest in corrupting an otherwise fair and balanced system. My recommendation tonight is to allow Supervisor Carl Croft, who was elected to a four-year term, to take his office in about two weeks, and to add his input in this case, share his discussions that he will be having with both parties over the next few weeks, and not rush, rush to a decision tonight, on an agreement that was finished being written as late as this afternoon. I make a motion to table the agreement until the new board takes office in January. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scribner, but unfortunately, that doesn't count. I do want to comment to you, in your comments, though.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
No one seconded it. You didn't get a second, Kyle.
George?
He's not seconding it, I don't hear it, so-
Oh, Mr. George?
He? Has, has the chair received a second?
Okay. First off, Kyle, I like to, I like to answer your questions for you, Kyle. There's been no, Kyle, let me talk, I'll let you talk. You appointed me to lead the discussion of settlement talks.
I never once did, no. George, George did, yes.
George and you, majority?
I never did, you voted yourself, George gave it.
Both of you.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Greg, you're there, did you not, Luke, should I say?
I'm telling you, the answer, no, I did not.
Really? Kyle, 'cause I was there when you said yes, I have no problem with that.
You hear a lot of things.
Okay. Secondly, that's your opinion. Secondly, you want to talk about lame duck session? Secondly, you wanna talk about lame duck session, which we've already heard that there's court case law. What did you and Mr. Fisher do for a special meeting at the end of 2019? You executed developer agreements, financial security agreements, that you didn't have the security for the taxpayers. You'd think that this MOU is so valid.
Explain to the residents what the MOU is.
An MOU was a contract for zoning. Basically, if you condemn this land that we need, we're gonna pay for all of your attorney bills, and we're gonna, we're going to indemnify the township. The problem is, the MOU is not an enforceable contract.
Says you.
Says Judge Griffith.
Says you.
Suge, says Judge Griffith.
Disagree.
Okay, disagree. Disagree with that, okay. I guess, I mean, at this point, I don't really think that I'm gonna comment on the rest of yours, 'cause you're just gonna.
I just wanna make a comment, I mean, Kyle, you were, you're talking about, we've been working on this agreement, and we've been working on strategies. Several times at executive session, you failed to show up, which means you had no interest in this whole litigation matter. Four or five times, we've had sessions, and you weren't there, so we've had to discuss matters ourself with our attorney.
Yeah, no, so to answer that question, I was advised by counsel to stay out of these mess, out of these meetings, so that I was not named, so I was not named.
Choose which one you wanna go to.
So I was not named in the lawsuit. By the way, I wasn't named in the lawsuit, you both.
Wow, I wonder why.
I just told you, you both were, I wasn't.
I had done my comments. I'm, at this point, I think we're done with public comment, and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion.
Hey, is board comment completed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion. Do I need to do a resolution, or can I just make a motion to?
Hold on, real quick, I'd like to ask the township manager what his thought is.
No, Kyle, Kyle, actually, I didn't ask, and I'm running the meeting, thank you.
I think it's important that the.
We've had his, we've had his input.
No, we haven't.
Sure we have.
Luke, would you like to make any comments about what's about to occur?
Am I recognized to speak?
No, we've heard your comments. We know your position. We've heard it, and this is just another tactic.
How can you not let the township manager speak?
Excuse me? Okay, go ahead.
Luke, you wanna speak?
Excuse me.
I mean, guys, we've heard this already.
No, we haven't, no.
We have, we, we have heard this. But we're the elected officials, we're supposed to be doing the best we can for you, Mrs. Nye. You voted for me, Mrs. Nye.
Order, please.
All right, yeah, sure.
Thank you. For the, for a meeting with this much interest and this contentious, I think it's, it's very important that only the speaker recognized by the chair speaks. Thank you for that recognition. Similar to Mr. Huliniak's representations, I have been a part of the executive sessions where we've discussed that, this proposed settlement agreement. In those executive sessions, I have raised my concerns about the strategy generally of settling with only a single party and with the individual provisions of the settlement agreement. To preserve the privilege of that, of that meeting, I will not rehash those objectives, those objections. I will, however, and unlike counsel, go on the record recommending that the board not enter into a settlement agreement this evening.
Thank you. Well, thank you. At the end of the day, the best we can do is what we have with, for the liability, and I feel that for the, for the taxpayers of this township, I think this is, this settlement agreement is generous, is generous to the township. It removes an obligation that is an unknown in the future, when you have an applicant who has already claimed that they have fulfilled their obligations to the township. So the best I can do is, I'm going to make a motion that the board execute the settlement agreement provided tonight between East Brannenwind Township, Eleanor Partnership LLC, and John Cropper, and Brannenwind Village Associates. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion failed.
That motion failed.
The motion did not receive a second, and therefore it fails.
Thank you.
It did not receive a second, therefore the motion fails. No vote is required. Second of the motion, therefore the motion fails. The motion is dead.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this settlement proposal between East Brannenwind Township, Eleanor Partnership LLC, and John Cropper, and Brannenwind Village Associates LLP.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Unbelievable.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Who just said that? I'm sorry? There's not public comment period? So, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. You know, you're right to your opinion. Let's move on now to the next one on the agenda. That is Maple View Phase III Developer Agreement and Financial Security Agreement. Luke?
Excuse me. No, ma'am. Ma'am, you're out of order. You're, you're out of order.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Resume from the recess. Sorry it took so long, thanks for your patience. We're gonna move on now to the Maple View Phase III Developer Agreement and Financial Security Agreement. Luke?
Yes, township staff has received from the developer of the Maple View project a set of plans for the recorder of deeds for Phase III of the Maple View project. Also included in your materials for execution this evening is records pertaining to their financial security for the improvements. These records have been reviewed by township, township engineer, and at this time, I respectfully ask the board make a motion to authorize staff to execute these records.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on now for ordinance of the resolutions consideration, Resolution 12 of 2022, adopting the 2022 budget. Luke?
So you, you've seen this chart at least seven times before as we've worked our way through the process of adopting a budget for 2022. The action item this evening is a resolution adopting the 2022 budget. This must be done before December 31st each year. The draft of the budget that is before you and the numbers that appear in the resolution are unchanged from the preliminary budget that you adopted at your PM session in November. At this time, it'd be appropriate to have a motion to adopt Resolution 12 of 2021, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2022.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Luke. And then finally, Resolution 13 of 2022, the appointment of Jason Frank to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, our very first agenda item this evening was regretfully accepting the resignation of a member of the zoning hearing board. Now transitioning from that somber news to the appointment, the promotion of a person who currently serves as an alternate on the zoning hearing board to fill the unexpired term created by the resignation of Jim Rosado. It'd be appropriate to make a resolution to adopt, make a motion to adopt Resolution 13 of 2022, pointing Jason Frank to the zoning hearing board.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agen items? Yes, Bruce. Can you state your name, though, Bruce?
Bruce Rollings, 566 Reorg Road. Last supervisors meeting, Jason, you came up with the idea of sidewalks going around Wallace, and I sent you a little email, and I think it's a great idea, and I think also maybe we can try to continue that down to the Sunoco also, to make it more of a walking community. How do we get that moving forward? I'm just gonna keep it on record, but I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I guess, Kyle, you know, we go to Trails Committee, get it on the.
More, more than that, because you're gonna be on property owned by the state as well, so you have to, it's, it's an easement.
Right.
So I think.
Well, I think we need to figure out what we wanna do.
Make a plan and propose it to the state.
Right, so do we have a committee that does that, or do we have, does it do, task force?
I would say Trails Committee, to go through them for this, and then, I mean, I'm just speaking from factual here, that we should probably have Trails Committee draw up the plan, we should submit it to the state.
Right, so does that need to be referred from the board, saying the Trails Committee?
I would think so, because it would be a direct deal.
So is that something we wanna do now? I mean, this.
We can't really do a motion right now, I think, because it's not on the agenda.
True.
But we can make sure this gets on the agenda for, for the next meeting, I guess, maybe not the reorg meeting, but maybe the.
The next one. I just want, I don't want it to get lost. I thought it was a great idea, I went and looked at it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you see children walking down the, you know, the long time.
Yeah, and I saw children walking down, cars racing by them, and stuff like that. Last item was, is the plank McCoslin conditional use. It's been prolonged and prolonged. Is there a way that we can look at what, what you as a supervisor has presented to them, and what upset them, and they're asking for extensions? I don't know what the policy is.
I'm not, you know, with, with the.
Because it's now.
We can't really discuss that, I don't think, because it's, we have until January 31st, so it will be, but it does have to do with the sewage requirements, I believe.
Okay, I don't, I didn't know, so maybe, because it's supposed to have been done a month and a half ago.
They had, they had, they had actually offered extension till 31st, so we.
Because they didn't like what you said.
I think, I have to imagine.
Well, that's what, it'd be nice to know, know, the public know, here, we've been talking about this, this is going on, and we're extending that, and I would put that in the minutes.
Yeah, we've, I think they're, they're not happy with the 40-foot riparian buffer.
I, I, I'm sorry to jump in, do we, do we still have representation on the line?
I'm still here.
Okay, should, should we be discussing any pre-decisional matters about the conditional use decision in a public meeting?
I, I don't think so, this is in the hands of the supervisors now, it's already been before the planning commission, so I think.
Yeah, I'm not asking for, I was just.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Whoa, whoa, Bruce, I don't understand why people just interrupt. Planning commission's had the opportunity to provide input, now it's in the hands of the supervisors for consideration. There's been some back and forth with the developer, I think that's as far as it should go.
Okay, I just wanted it as public knowledge, that's it. Thank you, Jonas.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agen items? I know that one woman, she left, so. Joe, did you wanna talk?
Yeah.
Hold on, Joe wanted, Joe had something to talk about.
I just wanted to make aware, I forgot during my report, I apologize, because I may not be able to be at the reorg meeting, but the supervisor should be in a, should be in receipt of an email from Tower Health, as the buzzword is with Brannenwind Hospital closing and Genresville closing. Tower Direct is a separate entity. Anthony Martin is the head of Tower Direct, and he, as of last week, I think it was, I sent it to you, Lisa, last week, last week, sent me a letter stating that they are going to be staying at the Houston Building, still providing coverage to this area, still providing ALS coverage, because it's, they cover the backside of East Brannenwind Township. So just so you guys are aware, they plan on still being there, even though the hospital will be closed in January 31st. No, 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 they work out of the Houston Building as a single standing paramedic unit.
May I, may I inquire, does that mean that our annual designation of emergency service providers language should remain the same as what we adopted in January of 2021?
As of today, hopefully, yes.
All right, well.
Unless I hear differently between now and the reorg meeting, Luke, which I will let you know, but the meet, the letter was pretty, you know, to the point that they plan on being there and providing a service.
Okay, at, at this point, the annual organization meeting will contain a, an ordinance establishing the emergency services provider, and the language will be precisely the same as last year's ordinance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, is there any other public comment on non-agen items?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.